You look tired. You look like you've been working.
Huh?
I was out in town last week. Yeah, it was nice. Yeah? Just gotta tuck the door a little bit. Yes. The old mail slot.
Yeah.
Uh, it goes downstairs. It used to be pneumatic, so you would put something in it. I think they're just trying to get all the utilities and everything on the upper floor. We're only able to access.
Let's get your wife taken care of.
It doesn't have an occupancy.
I'm very fortunate.
And we're out of money for this. Just hurts out. Yeah. Yeah, it is. It's a lot nicer to, the morale and everything being there versus where we were. The last time I remodeled at office was in the seventies, so it was just very bad.
You see me do that?
And then you bring.
What's that?
You bring public in and walk them around, and it was just not good. Just not a good representation of the county. So, but this office is, it's very respectful. Yeah. We, they were, you know, we've been asking. There's, there's a bunch of people that want it. We've got boxes and boxes of that red, that burnt orange red down stairs. It's just there.
Protect my head when I make it fall. I wear my helmet a little bit around here. Yeah, I wear my helmet. I wear.
Do you have the recorder?
As much gear as I can.
I think the ball. I'm really surprised. I've had a lot of people being nervous here in town. I'm just glad I drive out to Breathe Park. And now I'll reach away, because now she's here with me. I go, let's zoom out to work and then we're here.
Good evening, everyone. Like to call this evening City of Uniontown's regular city council meeting order July 6, 2023, at 5:20 PM. Roll call.
Councilman Billy?
Here.
Councilman Bisaki?
Here.
Councilman Winfrey?
Here.
Councilman Shuhon?
Here.
Mayor Gerke?
Here. All rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
An executive session was held this evening at 4:30 for legal matters. At this time, we have comments on agenda items only. Yes, sir. State your name and your address, please.
Hello, my name is Greg Riddensky. I'm a loyal taxpayer at 24 Robinson Street here in the city. I had, uh, we made copies of some of these, so some of my circles are on some of the copies. I had two questions about the two motions. Number 149 and 153. I wasn't aware that there was a Parks and Recreation position, so I had a question about the roles and responsibilities for that position, and if in the future, questions regarding setting up some sort of committee of concerned members from the community, all voluntary, is that who would reach out to? Or would we bring that question or that request to council? Because I know myself and several other members of the community would like to get involved. And we're not running for anything. We just want to get involved and be in part of. And so we all benefit from the parks in the city. My family, we play there, we walk through them, and sometimes it's not really safe to do that. And that's in regards to not only Bailey, it's very close to where we live, but that's also Grant Park, which is a tremendous turnaround. I walk near there all the time, and Kohlik, which isn't always safe to take a family near. So, uh, this is really nerve wracking, but I'm getting through it. And then also, number 149, could we extend that to cover 24 Robinson Street as well? Tough crowd. That's all I have. I just thank you, council. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Greg.
Thanks, Greg. Any other comments on agenda items only?
Do we have a representative from Omni Fiber here tonight?
Hi, good evening, everyone. The first agenda item number is 155. It's for a new handicap ramp to get poured. It's on the corner of Berkeley and Delaware Street. We had a main sewer line break there and had to remove some of the sidewalk, and that's just repairing what was existing there already. Number 156 is additional expenses for the excavator repair. When they took it apart, there was a few gears that were sheared off, and you can't buy the parts individually. You just have to buy the whole turntable, gearbox, or motor as a unit. So, in addition to the last meeting repairs, that would be added to the total. I believe it's approximately $9,300 for the total repair now.
What's the cost of the new one?
A new excavator that size is roughly $300,000. And item number 157 is to repair and replace the air compressor for the air conditioner in one of our pickup trucks. When our guys are out there working, it's hard and it's nice for them, or it's hot and it's nice for them to have a place to cool off and take a few minute break. That's all I have.
We're not able to repair the handicap ramps under your department?
No, we don't really have any cement finisher.
I just asked.
Yep. I did get the file number on the cement. It is only $39.
Real quick for you, how many full-time active employees do you have right now that are full duty in?
Right now, at this point, we have full duty, as you said, one person in the sewage department and three in the street department.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Any other comments on agenda items only?
Hi, my name's Jim Engle, and I live at Nine Barton Mill in Union Town. And my question is about 153, ratify hiring Tiffany Blahoe in Parks and Rec to replace Lisa Coffey. I just was curious, what, again, echoing a little bit of what Greg had had to say. So, I'm most familiar with Bailey Park. I live near Grant Street as well, and I have been down there. The, uh, Bailey Park has, and I'm assuming that it's not just Bailey. I would assume, like, it hits across our board, but like, is there any plan for trash pickup at our parks? Like, because we hit, so, I'm a pastor, and our church youth group went down and hit it two weeks ago. And then we got, I got a message from Greg frustrated because he was like, "It's trashed again," like, two days later. And then they went down and cleaned it up. And then I got a message from another friend that said, "It's trashed again," all in the span of a week. And I'm seeing, like, youth groups volunteering to be our trash pickup for our city. And that seems wrong to me. It seems like that should be a taxpayer-funded, especially with, I mean, again, when, when, when we've been out there, we've found things that kids should not be picking up. And, and, and really, paid city workers shouldn't be, have to either, but, but at least they have the proper PPE, you know, PPE to do so. So, I just, I mean, again, if we're going to be hiring somebody, it seems like trash pickup would be sort of the bare minimum for a functioning government. And, and I feel like that, that would be a really important piece for our, for our city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you ever fell under Parks and Rec, we just heard that the man said it's understaffed.
Yeah, and one, I want to just echo one more thing with that, too, is the fact that it was three times in one week just shows that there is a lack of respect for our parks, and it's a shame. We do our absolute best, and we're going to try even harder. But we, having the parks being trashed, it's difficult. Like, I had brought pictures in, prior to this, of a dumpster at Grant Street Park where somebody backed up, dumped it apart and full of stuff. It's so difficult. It's so hard just to get accountability for, and I assure you, we are, we really are trying. And since you brought that to our attention, we're going to do, if we can, just even more to try to, you know, do what we can to get these cleaned up.
Well, can I give, can I give a basic, really basic suggestion?
Absolutely.
So, again, we walk on the Sheep's芒路 trail. We're right, right in the whole area. I have never seen one of the metal garbage cans on the sheets again tipped over. You know, and I walk that almost every day. Those plastic garbage cans in the park, though, are none. I mean, one, they don't get empty on a regular basis. They've been full for a week again. Again, I walk through there on a regular basis. And, you know, we're using plastic garbage cans in one of the windiest areas in our, in our town. Of course, they're getting blown over and spread stuff everywhere. You know, could we, I mean, again, we're undersouth, but we, we'd rather metal garbage cans that are a little harder to tip over and, and spread around, you know, just simple things, little wins to keep us hopeful out our city.
And the only way we know that is by you showing up and telling us. So, we're going to look into, you know, whatever we can do to change that in a positive way. We don't, that, that's why I've encouraged people to show up. Until people bring it to our attention, it's hard for us to, as a city, to know all of the little details that go on. But people who are concerned and actually want to make a difference, we appreciate people showing up. So, we're not going to just say, "Ah," you know, and blow you off. We're going to see if we can do something to change that.
I appreciate that. And if, and if you want more of us to show up, I would recommend meeting them a little later at 5:00 PM on a, on a workday. That's, I mean, just again, just if you want, if you want input from the community, this is not a time that most people can make it.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Sure. Thank you. Any other comments on agenda items only?
Sorry, I'm company, right?
All right.
And again, this pertains to 153 as well. Just echoing Greg and Jim, and sorry, I don't have anything, like, prepared. But same things, trash, and, um, I'm here to bring it to, I guess, all of councils because I have been emailing consistently about this year after year. Just the basic needs of our parks are neglected. And I don't know why or how, and I'm just asking council to figure it out, I guess. I mean, there are people down there that work really hard and they do great. I don't know if they need more resources. I know, I know that I have big dreams for our parks. I've had to scale back. I know that, you know, funding is limited. But the guys that are down, are down there, do a great job. The grass is cut, but the weeds are never pulled. The weeds are up to my waist. The mulch is hit or miss. If it's been dumped, it's sat there two weeks before it got spread. I've had to ask for mulch. I've had to ask, I've had to email when the trash is full, requesting it to be emptied. So, you know, I just, I don't want to email every time I see something. As a taxpayer, I'd like to just feel that our parks' basic needs are met across the city. And I don't know how that pertains to 153. I'm not sure who's in charge or how it's organized, and I'm trying to get to the bottom of that information. But those are my concerns about the park.
Thank you.
Any other comments on agenda items only?
We do have a crew that, we do have a crew that's in charge of taking care of the parks, so I'll definitely get with them and see why trash is definitely pounding up and not getting picked up on a regular basis.
So, I know we, we do have a crew, and that crew is only tasked with, with taking care of the fields. So, this is something that would be additional. We're going to have to supplement them additionally to do that. And, you know, to address that issue is, you know, that, that's exactly what we need to do, is put more responsibility on that crew and also adjust the pay scale for them as well. And, and it's not just the parks, because you, on a daily basis, I'm in the garages. The garages are the same thing. And I'd like to touch base on what, what Councilman Bisaki had said. You know, it really gets down into, it's the pride that people have for the city. You know, we're all asking, you know, the same out of everybody, just as everybody asks out of us. You know, we, we, we want people to enjoy and respect where they live as well. And, you know, and we all up here at the table carry the same, you know, feelings for it. And it, you know, and I'm right there with you with the frustration as well, because you see this and you continuously have it picked up, and immediately after you have somebody pick it up, somebody else is there. We're having problems with our garage vandalism. Just today, I had passed a photo along, and it got to the street department, and they had taken care of it. But then immediately right after that, you have somebody else that comes in. So, you know, this is something that we're addressing, and, you know, it, it's, it's going to take a little bit more on our parks. We do run a very limited staff, you know, trying to break out and be able to take care of all of the parks is, is, is a task. And you get to think, too, that the, the, you only have about $80,000, $90,000 that's budgeted for the parks. And to increase that is going to take, you know, that's not just when we increase them. Of course, when we increase the mileage rate like we did this past year, okay, that ups everybody, you know, in every department, every fund. It ups their, their, the, the amount of revenue that's coming in. But really, what needs to be is, it needs to be just in that area where we need to increase that, that percentage that we're putting into the parks. So, I think that's something like I would like to address, you know, further. I don't exactly know if we'll be able to increase that. But, you know, that was one of the things that, you know, going to 13 mills did increase a portion of it, but it didn't increase the amount that is taken and split up between the general fund, the sewage, the rec, and the library funds. Thank you for bringing it to attention. I agree. It's extremely important.
I just have a question. I can understand who's concerned with what that's enough to do.
I, I, I could agree with you on that, Rev.
I wasn't aware of that position. That started my question. I didn't know where the position existed. Now I'm aware. I'm ashamed to answer that question. How about that? I should have paid attention in civics class.
You ever hear the name, which was all right? He opens position back in the sixties. This position has been around quite a while. It's never included.
And I think we could even touch base on, you could even get with the rec board, too. You know, here we have a board for the rec department, and it's, it's defunct. So, really, it's, it's something that we, we have talked. I've talked to many people that are in the audience right now about this, and it's something that we do need to, to, to get with. And, you know, we'll have more talk with that. I'd like to make sure that we get that board running again.
Now, I'd like to address that. 153 means that she's hiring her for Grant Street. There's no one at, at Bailey Park. Bailey Park is really not open. Okay, so there's no director at Bailey Park. She's at Grant Street. And the reason why they're replacing her, because Lisa Coffey, she got voted in, what, two months ago? And she couldn't fill the position, so Mr. Blahoe has been taking over for her. So, that's why that's on 153. There's, there's no, if there was a, if Bailey Park was open, I believe that it would be taken care of. Your concerns, but there's no director at Bailey, at Bailey Park, only on Grant Street. That's the only playground route we have open, is Grant Street.
Yes, Caroline?
I want to make it clarify, like, well, I was asking you about Parks and Rec, and I said yes, and then it all tells true. It doesn't feel like there's a function in Parks and Rec where we can try to use the law of that. And then it's always like the first thing, open, like, at home if that means like a director, like programs going on at the same time, could you just, like, have the parks and the good state where people can come and go freely without organized activity? It's kind of where I'm at. Like, just, they, they, is there people like that?
Absolutely.
And, you know, like, to see programs going on better, but like, just a normal person walking down the penny mercy parts. For me, I'm asking for it just to look presentable. And like, if somebody was there at some point, it's.
And I do want to thank the volunteers who have showed up, honestly. It's very much appreciated.
Yeah, we all pick up.
It really is. It's, it's very much appreciated.
I think the state was the word, higher activity level in Parks and Rec response over. I think that's where the state was. Or it's like my grand, that's helpful for me to say programming at Grant Street, because when I hear that the city has somebody paid to, on Parks and Rec, you know, whether or not Bailey Park is open, it's open. You know what I mean? I mean, we have, we have sports games there, you know, local, you know, so we're showing off to other school districts, you know, what we do and what we don't have. And we are also, we have the farmer's market there every week. And, you know, we have gas coming in from, from all over for that. And again, they're seeing either trash or, you know, overflowing trash cans. And that's not a way to keep, even a moment of going to improving in Union Town.
That makes sense. I, I respect your, your input on that, and honestly, it, it does make sense. It brings a little bit more attention to us, you know, to look into it, so see what we can do.
Appreciate you all.
Okay, thank you all for your comments.
Sure.
Are there any other comments on agenda items? If not, I have a few words I'd like to say. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and please allow me to give you a brief update on the state of the U. We held our Firecracker 5K race through the city this past Saturday with over 100 runners, joggers, and walkers. We felt it was a huge success. I want to thank all the sponsors and volunteers who turned out to make this race the success it was. In particular, Shannon and Desiree for their tireless efforts, as well as the city fire and police departments for all they did. A special thank you to Coral Dean for all his help. He always shows up without asking, never asks for anything in return. Thank you, Coral, for everything that you do. Without all of you, the race would not have been possible. Union Town Farmers and Producers Market has been running every Saturday at Bailey Park for over a month now, and we're averaging around 14 farmers and vendors each week. A special thank you to Mookie John for coordinating this event. Re-welcoming and directional signs is about to be hung in around the city. 28 signs that all will be replaced. They're the signs that direct people where to go, and they've been outdated and tattered and weathered, but 10 of them are done now, and hopefully the other 18 will be completed. And I spoke with the street department, and they're, they're planning on erecting those. Special thanks goes out to Brad Trot and Greg Riddensky and their families. They constantly patrol Bailey Park to pick up trash and make up our city's parks a better and safer place, as we've all been told this evening. But last Saturday night, around 7 o'clock, Greg contacted me with a disturbing message. He told me he found graffiti sprayed on one of the baseball dugouts. He asked if he had my permission to repaint the dugout. I said, "Of course," and thanked him. I thought he meant he'd do it next week. Within an hour, Mookie John sent me a picture of Greg and his team painting on Saturday night. I thank you for your efforts, your time, your passion to make Union Town a better and safer place to live, work, and play. Thanks again, Greg, for the call and getting it done so quick. Really appreciate it.
That's awesome. Thank you.
On August 12 and 13, the city will welcome back the Italian Heritage Festival hosted by the Union Town Sons of Italy. The festival will again be held downtown on Main Street. I want to thank the Sons of Italy for working with city officials to bring back this popular and well-attended festival. For more information, you can visit the Union Town Sons of Italy Facebook page. Our great, our Grant Street summer basketball program is in full swing, thanks to Ware Gladman and his team. And just, with just a few weeks left, I encourage you to stop down and check out the action. Union Town and basketball, they're synonymous since they've met. Finally, the comprehensive plan is about to be rolled out. This was a long time in the making and a lot of effort by a lot of people. I want to thank Gibson Thomas Engineering for their time, patience, and passion they put into crafting the city a usable plan. Thank you all. That's all I have, Tim.
You have to bear with me. I'm pretending to be the city clerk tonight, so if I mess up, just excuse that. So, for our first motion, would be it resolved by the city council of City of Union Town to receive the report of the treasure for the month of June 2023, be in the same as hereby received and filed. Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Bisaki?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the city council of the City of Union Town to accept the minutes of the June 1st, 2023 regular city council meeting. Councilman Bisaki?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the city of council of the City of Union Town, council hereby directs the Director of Accounts and Finance to make payment of the following invoices for services rendered or products procured for the City of Union Town. June 2023 invoices. General Fund, $83,712.46. Sewer Fund, $27,726.63. Recreation, $8,371.83. Highway, $23,237.38. Off-street, $3,651.1. Recycling, $1,531.81. And library, $40,000. Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Bisaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the City of Union Town, or the city council of the City of Union Town, to reappoint Paul Palya to the City of Union Town Redevelopment Authority Board for a five-year term to begin July 1st, 2022 through July 1st, 2027. Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Bisaki?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the city council of the City of Union Town to appoint Jared Billy to the Union Town Redevelopment Authority Board for a five-year term beginning July 1st, 2023 through July 1st, 2028.
I'd like to say something real quick about this one. I feel responsible, and I think people deserve to know why I'm going to vote the way I'm voting. I'm going to vote no. I, every month.
I, every month, there are comments and remarks about the sewage department and the street department. Um, they are personal comments. Um, last month was about my reelection signs. It is what it is. Um, this is not a personal vote. This is a vote because this shows me that Mr. Billy is unable to be non-biased when it comes to choosing, uh, between the redevelopment or the city. Um, I just, I don't think it's a good idea. Uh, it's not legally a conflict of interest, but I, I don't, I don't see this as, is the, is the right way to go. Um, I'm just, this is not, like I said, a personal, but I'm tired of John being attacked, me being attacked, uh, my department being attacked, and it's not just me. I've had plenty of people come up and ask me, so what is, what is the deal with this? And I don't know. Um, I just, I, I can't, in good faith, vote yes. I just, I don't think that there is any clear indication that you could be non-biased. I, and I just, I, I don't feel comfortable voting yes. I'm not gonna vote yes, I'm going to vote no. Um, just being on council does not guarantee a spot. Um, you were pretty upset last month when we didn't vote on it, and, uh, it's not a given, you know? People don't have to vote a certain way because of current positions. It, it's just, it's not right. Um, we came in, we had an executive session before last meeting, and you didn't attend, sat out here. Um, you've walked out of several meetings, I just, I, I don't feel comfortable voting yes, and I just want you and everyone to know why. It's not personal, but I'm just, I'm just, I'm over the attacks. I bite my tongue every month, and I have, and I, I will continue. But I can't, in good faith, vote yes, and I want you in the public, the council, to know why I'm voting no. I have not solicited my opinion to anybody here on council. This is my vote, my vote only. This is up to everyone to make their own choice. But I feel strongly that this is, it, to me, it's a definite conflict of interest. I, I don't understand how this is not even legally a conflict, but I just want to make it known why I'm voting the way I am. And, uh, Councilman Billy, it's not personal. Um, I'm not sure why there's, you know, comments about the director or my department, but, um, I've given a call to try to discuss, but it, it seemed to be falling on deaf ears. So I'm sorry to take that, you know, be long-winded, but, uh, my vote, when I get asked, is gonna be no, and I want to just explain why.
And I, I respect that.
Just, uh, for councils, because I know this was raised, it, it, under the State Ethics Act, it, it's not an inherent conflict of interest for a member of council to serve on city council and the redevelopment authority board. So I just want to make that clear for everybody, so it's confirmed for the record that, that's not an inherent conflict. Now, there could be certain issues that could be raised that could present conflicts where a council member who's on both could not vote, um, but with respect to the, the actual appointment itself, it's not an inherent conflict, so. Um, wanted to then start with Councilman Billy.
I am going to recuse myself.
And we'll note that as an abstention?
Absolutely.
Uh, Councilman Visaki?
No.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
No.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to accept the bid for Uniontown City Police in-car computers with batteries and docking stations from, and then there is a spot there for the actual bidder and the amount of the bid. Do we have that information? Chief, do we have that information? For the in-car computers with batteries and docking stations?
The actual bid?
The actual bid.
I do not have the plan of which, uh, can that, uh...
Let me see if it's in my packet. Here we go. So it looks like this is a bid. Total amount would be for, uh, eight units, uh, computers and docking stations with the in-car mounting. It would be for a total of not to exceed thirty-six thousand dollars. Do we know who the, who submitted the bid?
I do not know who submitted the bids, sir. I mean, see what...
Uh, that's the only information I have in my packet. I'm unaware of any other information that we have.
We might have to table this.
Chief, is it something that is immediately necessary? We have to back on this?
Yeah, I mean, the, the prices on these are locked in quarterly, so they continue with supply chain issues, costs on computers are going up. Um, we went from being able to possibly obtain ten units four months ago to now possible to, I've new price spectrum again, to only being able to receive eight, um, at maximum.
Okay.
Do you come up here?
Uh, I'm messaging her.
Okay.
What I'll do is, we'll move to the next agenda items and then come back to that one, if that's acceptable, council.
Yeah.
All right, we'll come back to that one. Uh, be it resolved to, by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to rescind the city business license in agreement between the City of Uniontown and sponsor Ashley Neptune, authorizing her and other vendors and volunteers to host a community, a community night event called Uniontown Movies in Bailey Park for failure to comply with all requirements. Uh, Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Visaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Uh, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize the East End United Community Center to use Grant Street Park to host this year's National Night Out on Tuesday, August first, twenty twenty-three, from five o'clock to eight o'clock PM. Uh, Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Visaki?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to exonerate the twenty twenty-three city real estate property taxes for both eleven Iowa Street, parcel number thirty-eight dash one-two dash zero-two-four-nine, and thirty-two Carnival Street, parcel number thirty-eight dash one-two dash zero-two-four-nine. Both properties were owned by the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Uniontown and/or Fayette County Tax Claim in repository, and the properties were sold by repository sale during which all current taxes should be exonerated and abated, abated by statute to real estate tax sale law. Uh, Councilman Billy?
I will be abstaining.
Uh, Councilman Visaki?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Councilman, or Mayor Gurke, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve and authorize the request of Brian Sykes for formal recognition of an alley located at the rear of his residence at one seventy-six Liberty Street, Uniontown, by naming said alley Sykes Alley in honor of Leon Sykes. Uh, Councilman Visaki?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize the city clerk to advertise for sealed bids for paving of the following city streets. Daniel Street from Downer Avenue to Princeton, twenty-eight feet by seven hundred and seventy feet asphalt wedge curbs. Race Street from Boyle to Route fifty-one, thirty feet by six hundred and sixty-five feet asphalt wedge curbs. Boyle Street from Downer to Race Street, twenty-two feet by six hundred feet asphalt wedge curbs and ADA compliant ramps, um, one at Boyle and, and Wine, four at Boyle and Downer, and two at Daniel and Princeton.
Real quick, I'd like to say something about this one. Um, we would love to pave every street, it's just, it's not possible, but fortunately, a lot, since there's been a lot of utility work, we've had a lot of the roads repaved because of it. Um, so we're going with these ones for now. Um, we have had a lot of work done on the east ends, there's been some roads, you know, redone, um, and they're still working on reconstruction of some of the sidewalks, but, uh, we are just working on them as, on a, as needed basis, so just wanted to let you know.
And I'd just like to add that these streets were chosen to avoid, uh, new construction of the gas and water, but they have planned for the next one for three years. So they were not paving street, they're, they're like dugouts.
Right, thank you.
That's why these were reconstructed, they are in pretty poor condition.
Thanks, John.
Thank you. I'll, I'll go to take a vote on that one? Okay. Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Visaki?
Yes.
And Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Uh, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve a one-time authorization to accept cash payments for the City of Uniontown Firecracker Five K Race. Uh, Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Visaki?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
And Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Uh, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to ratify hiring Tiffany Blaho as a day assistant in Parks and Recreation to replace Lisa Coffey, effective June twelfth, twenty twenty-three, at twelve dollars per hour. Uh, Councilman Billy?
So this was just to replace this person? We did not advertise for this position? We're ratifying this position? Is that, am I correct? This person's already working, we're ratifying?
That would, that would appear to be correct, yes.
Okay, we, but we did not advertise for this, for this position?
I'm not aware of whether it was advertised.
No.
Uh, Councilman Visaki?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Uh, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize consultant Mark John to submit a grant application for the Sheepskin Trail to Fayette County LSA Grant on behalf of the City of Uniontown. Councilman Visaki?
Apply for every single grant possible.
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Uh, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize installation of a handicapped ramp at the corner of Berkeley Street and Delaware Avenue by costable construction for up to six thousand dollars. The ramp had to be demolished during a sewer, sewer line repair done by the city. Uh, Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Visaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the City of, City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize the purchase of needed additional parts for repair of the city's excavator for use at the pompo site from Best Line Equipment at a cost of five thousand dollars. Uh, Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
No.
Councilman Visaki?
Uh, yes, real quick, um, I think that the numbers for the bank information from last month were, uh, possibly read incorrectly, um, but we are approximately two hundred thousand under what we spent last year, um, when it comes to this equipment, we really don't have a choice. I mean, we have two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand dollars for a new one, or we pay ten thousand dollars for repairs.
We always have grant opportunities as well.
That's why I said apply for any single grant, but that doesn't help us right now. We need to get the machine up and running. So I just want to explain where we're at, and...
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
And Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize the installation and purchase of a new air conditioner compressor for the two thousand and ten Dodge Ram used in the sanitary sewer department for five hundred and forty-five dollars by Westside Auto. Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Visaki?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve the proposal as presented from Omni Fiber for a request of a permitting fee reduction for installation of fiber optics in the City of Uniontown. Omni Fiber will be submitting a total of thirty-three permit requests, thirty-one for underground construction and two for placement of telecom cabinets. And just to confirm, so the, the proposal was to maximize the engineering reimbursement to a hundred dollars per application and to cap the, um, the right-of-way permit access to two hundred and twenty-five dollars per application. Uh, council, Councilman Visaki?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
There was supposed to be someone here to, to explain this, right?
They indicated that they would have a representative here to explain their proposal and support their proposal, yes.
No.
Councilman Shuhon?
No.
Councilman Billy?
No.
And Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be it resol, oh, I'm sorry, then it's the, this one. To go back to, um, the previous resolution, uh, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to accept the bid for Uniontown City Police in-car computers with batteries and docking stations in accordance with the proposal received in an amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand dollars.
Not to exceed thirty-six?
Not to exceed thirty-six thousand. So it could come in for less than that, but that was the proposal that was actually received.
And, and who was this from?
We actually don't have the name. We have the proposal in hand, and we would just have to confirm, so if there's a question with respect to it, we'll vote on it tonight, subject to ratification at a subsequent meeting, if there's some sort of, um, uh, impropriety with respect to the actual bidding process or the actual identity of the bidder itself, so. Um, council, Councilman Visaki?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilman Shuhon?
Yes, so on the sheet that says twenty-four thousand, must not exceed twenty-four thousand, that's for the computer, um, part of it, and must not exceed twelve thousand, and that's for the docking stations in each auto, so the total there is not to exceed thirty-six thousand.
Correct.
That's where you got that from, so, yes.
And Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Yeah, real quick, I, I have one forty-five, what's the next course of action you guys have to do to close this?
So any action taken by council has to be at least a, a three, three-member vote in affirmative.
Okay.
Um, therefore, that motion would not pass, and that, because that position remains up for consideration by council for filling, uh, voting to fill the vacancy there.
Hey.
Okay, monthly reports. Um, Director of Redevelopment Authority, Crystal?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was looking forward to being part of the fourth, fifth.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I passed out the agenda and, uh, just have a few things to go over. As always, the CDBG, uh, status. Uh, we had one meeting, June eighth, twenty twenty-three, we canceled the second bi-weekly, but we'll meet again on July twentieth. Again, that meeting is made up of the chairman of the Redevelopment Authority, the city council, the mayor, and city clerk. That meeting will be held July twentieth is our next one. That meeting will be held July 20th is our next one. The quick glance sheet that I've passed out, there's not a lot of updates from last time, but I did firm up the tentative hearing date, which I'll go into further detail. So there's, there's not a lot of project changes. All projects are not changed at that, on the sheet, but the project updates, Lemon Street Playground, that project, the actual installation of the playground equipment went first. And I explained last month, it went first because the bidding for the actual construction was three times the amount of what it should be because of the tight timeline that the state had put on our grant funds. They ended up extending our grant funds, so we were able to rebid. So we just rebid and we anticipate a potential award on July 19th, and we feel that we're going to be able to afford the full concrete walkways and it'll wrap up the rest of the benches and things once the excavation can be done and the rest of it can be cleaned up. There will be project signs there with rules of the park and there'll be further discussions on maintaining and just operations and maintenance of the park. Building demolition is underway. The demolitions that need to be done require an environmental review. We're looking at, I left it off there, but it's actually 80 and 82 Lemon, which is right beside the park. 82 Lemon, we have the, we took the legal route to be able to demolish the building, but now we are looking to purchase that property as well, so we'll have ownership of both 80 and 82 to expand Lemon Street Park a bit more with maybe some different amenities. There'll be 55 Lennox, 84 Murray, and 39 Winona. Those are five of the structures that are in most need that we were able to prioritize. And what we're going to do is do the demolitions together, so we'll bid them together to hopefully, you know, get, get that mini done this year, so this summer we would, we should be able to get it completed. So those environmental reviews, we've coordinated with Frederick, the code enforcement, to save some costs there to hopefully use his services so we could reimburse his time. And to add to that, the demolition and the actual properties of, of the Redevelopment Authorities, just this week, a total of seven of those properties have been secured. We had bought 11 properties off Last Repository and we were going through the process of the taxes and iron them all out with deeds and, and we just got out there to secure and is, is now in compliance with the code to have the boarded-up windows on the bottoms and tops of each floors. So with some, there's some caution tape and stuff, so we've taken care of those, those structures that needed the most. All the properties and the mowing and cleanup has been underway. Unfortunately, the, the, what I explained last month, working with the prison under the community cleanup crew, the, the state, SEI Green didn't approve that application. I asked why and they said that they needed more of a firm, single location rather than several locations, which we had them going to, which I guess I can kind of, maybe for their security, it was, it was easier for that. So we, we will be looking at possibly Eagle Scouts to do some projects to help us out with some of those minor cleanups. And I just thought I'd add, if there's the Eagle Scouts, when I talked to that, the, I don't know what you call him, the scout leader, he said if there's a project that you'd want to see done, so maybe that would be someone that could help with Parks and Rec. The 2023 application is due October 27th, 2023. The first hearing and modification hearing will be held together. I have a tentative date of August 10th at 6:00 PM. At this meeting, I just want to stress to the audience, it's your public input is extremely helpful and at these meetings, we are looking for community input projects that you would like to see done, whether it be parks and recreation, or if there's infrastructure projects, or roads, or, or services, any projects you would like to see happen, it's really great for you to bring those forward at this meeting. It's not been advertised yet. We are looking at a location off-site that may be at a community center to try to help bring in, bring in more people that way, but it will be advertised digital, WMBS and Facebook and it'll be in the newspaper, so just keep your eyes open for that. Tentatively August 10th at 6:00 PM. We're allocated $311,565, 18% of that's used for administration, but that funding can be used for a project in the community. We just used that money for Lemon Street Park. So we are looking for a three-year community development plan to be able to organize what we see in the future could be done and through the community. We're modifying fiscal year 2020, so Lemon Street can have a pavilion as well. So the pavilion's going to be a little smaller than, and then originally thought, but, but we're working through the budget, so, so that's modifying some funds that otherwise couldn't be used in fiscal year 2020. The other funds that are expiring, we're still vetting out those projects. Just the, this, this afternoon, I sent out an email to coordinate the Beeson work group is what I'm calling it, and the sewer work group. So we're, I'll hear back from those folks that were selected to participate in those work group meetings and hopefully from there be able to find available grant funds and put together some sort of sources and uses and plans for sewage projects, for rehabilitation specifically, and the Beeson sidewalks, roadways, Beeson area. Grant Street, ADA accessible bathrooms, those site visits are complete. K2 took care of that for us and would soon be giving us a idea of what those costs are to hopefully look at that being a project for the CDBG funds. Procurement of engineering services is underway. I hope within the next month that we release the request for qualifications. We have an ongoing project inventory. Anybody who has a project, whether it be at the CDBG meeting, in an email, on a phone call, if you see a project in the community that you feel should be done, reach out to the Redevelopment Authority and let us know. We, we are keeping an inventory. It's just a list right now, but it, like Steve said earlier, if you're in the community and you know what your resources are available and services that are available, we want to keep track of that too at the Redevelopment Authority to help, help with development. Summer concert series has been going well. June 8th, it started, didn't have it today, of course, but it will be every Thursday for the next Thursdays until August 24th. You can reach out to the Redevelopment Authority with questions on that. We, we are partnering with WVU and can help answer any questions. The Municipal Systems Planning Grant, there's three payment requests underway for your comprehensive plan, so those payment requests is going to reimburse what you funded to date. I'm working with Gibson Thomas right now. Apparently, the Planning Commission needs to have some follow-up meetings with Gibson Thomas, so I've reached out to the Planning Commission and offered to facilitate those meetings. There needs to be some sort of input as a board from the Planning Commission and the Municipal Authorities Act and the rule for comprehensive plans, they should be involved. So I'm kind of helping with that, just to kind of facilitate it, because the, the comprehensive plan is important for the Redevelopment Authority too, regardless if it's a actionable plan or, you know, whatever they're putting together for us, it's very helpful to us and what we pursue with grant funding. So we hope that be at the end of July and then hopefully again, we can meet in August, the beginning of August, to then move forward with public input. So on my timeline, it's looking like the comprehensive plan would possibly be ready for city approval in October. And the last is just the Downtown Union Town Business District. I'm still working with them at the RDA and the Downtown Business District discussing some sort of cooperation agreement to work together on the local share account for the strategic plan to put something like that together. I also want to add, add again, that the Strategic Management Planning Program is an excellent source of funds to organize long-range plans, so when there's costs sneaking up on you for replacing equipment and costs that maybe you didn't anticipate, that, that this strategic management plan can actually project in the future five years and outline some of the costs, so, so there's not immediate surprises and, and so that there could be planning towards other grant opportunities. So DCD is really encouraging that and hopefully in other conversations, the RDA can work with the city to administer that as well. So I know that was a lot, but I had a lot on my list. Any questions?
Yeah, the meeting, July 20th, the CDBG meeting, is that at 6:00 PM also?
That one there is the status meeting. We have those usually at 10:00 AM and that's just our CDBG work group. It's Kim, Jared, Matt, and my, and the mayor and myself, just as a kind of a guidance for the CDBG grant. Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. Uniontown Fire Department, Chief Corn.
Well, all right, good evening, everybody. As usual, going to go through the number of runs and types of runs we had for the month of June 2023. It's a pretty busy month. We had 13 fire-related incidents. These included four building fires, one electrical fire in a building, one cooking fire confined to the stovetop, one trash fire, one passenger vehicle fire, two brush vegetation fires, one dumpster fire, and two scorch burns, but no active fire, again, in a building and close calls. Could easily been two more fires. 22 related resc, resc, excuse me, 22 rescue-related incidents. 16 of these were motor vehicle collisions. One was a vehicle versus pedestrian, three removals of an ill or an injured person from a building assisting EMS with extricating somebody, one animal rescue, and one extrication of an entrapped victim from a vehicle collision. A little side note there, the new rescue tools that we took delivery of were used on that incident and worked tremendously, so it was great. It was great. We had six hazardous condition incidents, including one flammable liquid spill, one carbon monoxide incident, two electrical hazards, one power line down, and one attempt to burn. We had 14 service-related incidents, including five lockouts or gaining access, mostly for the EMS crews, one person in distress incident, one water leak, one assisting of an invalid person, and six general public service incidents. Had two smoke scares or odors of smoke, but fortunately, no fire occurred. 17 fire alarm activations. We witnessed two drills in public facilities, and again, we always include staff training, pre-incident planning and building familiarization, so it's nice, it's a, actually a training session both for their staff and for our folks as well. We really like to do that with the outreach. And we had two public fire prevention, fire education programs. Also like to highlight the training taken. Numbers were not bad this month, a little down, but it is summer, a lot of people on vacation. We still had 74 man-hours, which is pretty good. It's pretty impressive for the month of June. Going to highlight some special training that we had as well. We had the West Penn Power, West Penn Power at our location, they have an electrical safety trailer and they did a demonstration. This was set up by Assistant Chief Lent. It was very, very beneficial training and we actually opened that up to a number of neighboring fire agencies, all of the ones around the townships and some of the neighboring ones in the counties, and we even had a couple companies from Mon County, West Virginia in attendance, so it was very nice. Speaking of training, a question for Crystal, council, whoever it may concern. You just say it, said about the properties that redevelopment is trying to get or has, would our department be able to, before you do demolition with that, do some training in them? If they're viable structures?
I think that could be considered. We meet on July 19th, so I can get that up in the agenda, just the, maybe you know what the plan is.
Yeah.
Insurance.
Sounds good, yeah. We are always looking for vacant structures to train in, or guys, they, they like to, I mean, you, you can stand there and lecture and preach and this, that, and the other, but they really, they like to get their hands on and sweat, so that would be a great opportunity for us, so, yeah, hopefully we can make that work. Finally, a couple other things, apparatus and equipment updates. Our ladder truck was inspected last, last month doing the required PA, state vehicle inspection. Right now, we don't have anything due until August. Just a couple other miscellaneous notes, our application is in for the Act 104 grant through the Office of the State Fire Commissioner. This was for repairs and upgrades for our fire station, for municipal fire departments. We have a number of needs for this and we could receive up to $100,000, so if you're the praying type, say your prayers tonight, you know what I mean, because we really could use it. We should be hearing something, something soon, hopefully.
Is that free and clear or is there?
Free and clear.
Lots?
Free and clear, so, like, like I'd be doing somersaults in the street, you know what I mean? If we got that, it would be, it would be a godsend, believe me, to say the least, yeah. I was gonna say, everyone will have their video cameras, I want to see that, you know, but hopefully so, hopefully so. Our personnel still continue to be involved in public and community events, outreach programs, public fire education, pre-incident planning. We did have a crew for the, both the 5K race and we did a really nice thing up on Main Street with the show and tell up there, and the guys that were up there that day said there was a lot of public interest, a lot of, lot of questions. They made the kids happy, they got to see the fire trucks and the equipment, and a lot of the adults had questions fire-related, so it's always a good thing whenever we have that opportunity to do that. And lastly, everyone knows what tonight is, so I need not say more. 6:45 at the social hall, doors are already open now, so you better get over there and get your specials. And I think that's all I have. Anybody have any questions, comments? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
All right.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Police Department, Chief DeWitt?
Thank you.
So during the month of June, the Union Town Police Department responded to 826 calls for service. A breakdown of some of those calls unfortunately included two criminal homicides, 26 vehicle accidents, seven assaults, 25 welfare checks, 39 domestics, four assist fire calls, 14 disorderly conducts, 19 emergency medical assists, 17 assists other police departments, 18 harassments, nine shots fired, 31 alarms, 95 suspicious persons, activities, or vehicles, 20 thefts, four overdoses, and 18 animal complaints. Officers made a total of 51 criminal arrests, issued 34 non-traffic citations, and 60 traffic citations. We did our patrols like we always do in our city parks. One of my guys actually found the graffiti and we sent it out, so whoever fixed that, if you're still here, thank you. Greatly appreciated. Some of those tags were sent to some other departments we've been working with, fruitful for, to us for intelligence on gang-related stuff. During the month of June, code enforcement closed five cases, opened 15 new cases, and is carrying over approximately 40 cases from May. I'm sorry, from June. Officer Camford also has been instructed to start a demolition list, compile demolition list, to help redevelopment maintain an active list of properties, prioritize the ones that are top, that he can get them all together and you guys can pick what you see to be the most fit to tear down when money makes itself available. Since the beginning of June, the mayor, some members of the city council, and myself have met with concerned community members at the Fresh Fire Church. These meetings have covered a range of topics, to include crime suppression, code enforcement, and economic concerns. I can, can't speak for everyone, but I'm sure they're going to echo this, that I look forward to continuing the conversation and working towards a solution to benefit our city and its residents, and also its visitors. I said in that meeting, the two meetings I've been at, unfortunately, we're handcuffed right now with the generational issue and we need to come to a community solution to solve this problem. I can't solve it in a black and white car, I can arrest things after the fact or proactively, but we're dealing with generational issues that, to be frank, start in a home.
Evening.
Council, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. Director of Public Works, John?
This month for the total sewage collections, they took in 196,164 and 24 cents, bringing the year-to-date total to $1,203.69 and 12 cents. And as again, as I always say, the two women that work in that office, they are, they do a good job and they try to keep on task and do their job well and are always there to help when I have a question regarding billing or new taps or any of that matter. As far as the Streets Department, just recently, I believe, two weeks ago on the June 20th in my work program, the kids have, well, young adults have come in and they've been going around and cleaning downtown and they've attacked some of the parks and started going through there. I believe they're down at Bailey Park painting bleachers now and stuff, and they've been a great help in tackling some of the little odd end and jobs that we have for them, and they've been good workers throughout the weeks they've been here with, especially with our short staff. In the Sewage Department, as Councilman Visaki asked, there is only one person there, so I have fallen back into the duty of working alongside him and that's all well with me and we've been trying our best to keep up with all our day-to-day tasks and anybody that has issues or concerns, you are still on the radar, we're just trying to prioritize any issues we have throughout the city with our short staff, but I keep everything wrote down and we get, try to get to every issue in a timely manner. We had some breakdowns with the Beast at the compost site, which I just learned recently when they're building it, they fabricate a lot of parts, so they weren't able to be all. ordered. So we worked alongside of, we got local fabrication shops to help to cut out and fabricate the parts that were needed for it to keep it operational. That site's a demanding site, and it's never-ending down there. It costs money to run, and as Steve said, new equipment isn't cheap, so the equipment we have, we have to keep running until the time comes where we are able to replace it. One more thing I would like to add is the young man that was recently gunned down. He was a city employee, and he was a dear friend and family member to myself and my family. He was, he worked two summers here part-time. His name was Anthony Jones, and I'd just like to take a moment of silence and remember him. Thank you. I thought I was going to get to that, but I'm crying.
Thanks, John. Now it's time for public comment. We have the rules up on the doors, three minutes for each speaker, and we'll start with public comment. Reverend Crable?
Reverend Crable, most expressive item ever to see in Uniontown. I'd say to the mayor and to the council, I want to commend the council for the great job that was done in revitalizing Bailey Park. But here comes that conjunction. But where is the baseball leagues at Bailey Park? I ask that question because just a couple of councilmen and myself have been discussing about the great times we had at Bailey. Pastor Winfrey and myself, we both coached baseball over 20 years at Bailey Park. But there was also a gentleman there by the name of Jim Burns. A lot of us know Jim Burns, and some of us don't, but Jim Burns was a baseball extraordinaire. He played high school, college baseball, was quite an athlete, and Jim Burns is now the coach of the Union Town baseball team. Jim Burns and I had a conversation along with Councilman Winfrey the other evening, and Mr. Burns and I were talking about Bailey Park, about those great times, and also about revitalizing baseball. And Mr. Burns said to me, "You'll like this, Mr. Billy," he said, "He would volunteer his time to rebuild baseball at Bailey Park." And he said, "All he would ask is the mayor and council to get in touch with him, and he would begin to work on revitalizing, rebuilding baseball at Bailey Park." And also, I know my time's running out, also, I understand at that meeting, some of the people were requesting that city council would build playgrounds in their community. I'd like to inform them for watching that there already is playgrounds in those areas. They just need to be reopened.
Thank you. Thank you, Reverend Crable.
My name's Buck Griffith. I'm resident Wilson Avenue of Town, former fire chief until a year and a half ago. Anyway, a couple little problems. One of them, if there is any money left, the building on East Main Street, the Civil Defense Building, we, you took the money off of that, you know, there was money there to rebuild, make that building serviceable again, and that money was taken, I understand, to do the grants, the Lemon Street project, finish the Lemon Street project. So that building's sitting empty. If something's not done with it soon, might as well tear it down. It's going to fall down. Okay, and something else, speaking of buildings falling down, the building on Stockton Avenue, there's a house on Stockton Avenue, about the second one up, if you go up the street the wrong way on the left-hand side. We inspected that property about two years ago, myself, the code enforcement officer, and K-2 engineering, and I don't know what happened after that, but I know the side of the house is blown out now. The bricks have blown out. They've hit the house on the other side. If that house falls over, there's going to be a catastrophe, and something needs taken care of soon. That's all I got to complain about right now.
Any other public comment?
I have a question, real quick. With being as short-staffed as we are, there's definitely less payroll. I just wanted to ask Councilman Billy if you can explain why I don't get your support on, simple maintenance on equipment.
So, and I think you're taking this, and really what you've done is you've understood my disagreements and my questioning as something personal against you and the department, and that's completely false. And it hurts the cause that we attempt to do here on a monthly basis. So, you know, yes, we are saving money in certain areas, but you got to see where, you know, and you got to understand from my standpoint. My standpoint is to look over the city of all the, of all the expenses that we do, okay? And where I see is your department always likes to spend money without first looking for grant opportunities. We have opportunities for grants. And we can go back to last year. Last year, and it was part of the reason why we spent so much more over our budget. You know, so, and so you're asking me why now, that because you have extra revenue, why I am not voting for things? So I, I've asked you to remember last year, okay? So we ended the year with a deficit last year. That's why we raised taxes, okay? So my thing is, is when we set a budget, my job and responsibility is to come in under that budget, okay? So you're asking why, because you have money in your, in your budget, in certain line items, and there's our line items where you've gone over in your budget, and there's line items where you're under, and it kind of washes out. But I ask people to do, you know, reallocation on the line items as well, because that's the proper thing to do. So, you know, and I, and I understand that, you know, well, actually, I don't understand. I don't understand when I disagree with somebody and I question somebody on money, why that is interpreted that I have something personal. It happens time and time again, okay? Here's the thing. Get under budget, okay? We're trying to spend the least amount to operate, and that's what we should be focused on. Instead, we get up in here and we, we, you know, and frankly, if anyone should be offended to take things personal, it should be me, okay? I, you know, and I want to thank Councilman Shuhon and Councilman Winfrey, okay? I talked to all the council members. I've talked to the mayor about this. Everyone gave me their word, yes.
No, you did not talk to me.
Yes, you did. I did talk to you, so you're not going to say that, okay? You can say that now, but we know, and I wouldn't come out and say that we talked when we did. So, and, you know, and as far as the comments, if I'm going to attack, I mean, I will go straight at it. You, after a meeting, you know, we, you know, we taxed, we had some, we went back and forth, okay? So, and I said, because you wanted to know why the snide comment. There was no snide comment. It was a, it was a general comment about a sign, and it said that on, no hidden agendas. Okay, so that was your sign. Now, if I was going to attack you, I would have said that you didn't, that it actually was a violation, because there was no paid for underneath, you know? I'm not coming to attack you. I'm here trying to work with you, okay? And my thing is this, okay? I'm not worried about what people think about what I say, okay? I've said this before. I couldn't care less what people truly think about what I say. What I'm most concerned about is they believe me, okay? So getting back into, you're asking me why, and that's a really drawn-out answer. You're asking me why. I mean, it's real simple, is that I'm trying to save money so that we can lower the millet rates. And if you would support lowering millet rates, then you wouldn't want to spend exactly what you have in your budget.
Just for record, it's not your vote. It's the comments around it, but you've already addressed that.
Well, we could talk more about the comments if you'd like, because, you know, I've never once in this meeting come at anybody, okay? Now, there are some people here that I have, have gone back and forth with me. Okay, we'll go back and forth, but I haven't come out and said, "There's a lot of things that I could actually say." There's a lot of things, but then those things could be damaging in a meeting and really hurts progress that we all want, you know? And I think it's funny that you said it wasn't personal. Your vote wasn't personal, but yet you sat here and you talked about everything that I did to you and your department, truly. And I've said this to the director of your department, and I've said this to everybody here, because I think everybody is, we, except for Councilman Winfrey. Councilman Winfrey gets me, okay? But me and Councilman Winfrey, we go back, just like Reverend Crable. We go back to Bailey Park days. But what's most concerning to me is when you sit at a table with a group, and everybody tell you that they're going to do, now, we can't get together all together and decide what we're going to do, because that's a sunshine violation. But we can talk to everybody individually, which is the mayor's responsibility to do, so he can make sure he's the whip and gets everything in line. And, you know, so you, it kind of puzzled me a little bit when you say that, you know, you're not doing anything intentionally or personal. There's no personal vendettas or nothing yet, but you want to talk about how I have personal issues. Truly, the only issues I have is when it comes to spending money and how stupidly we spend money. Last year and the previous years, I face it, this administration's not good, okay? We have wasted a lot of money. We lost grant money, okay? We've, we have spent, okay, so last, you know, you go into the first year, okay, hundreds of thousands of dollars of deficit, okay? Last year, hundreds of thousands of dollars of deficit. It's compound interest, okay? It doesn't reset like Councilman Wazaki says, okay? Oh, my budget's low. That's not how it works. It's compound interest. It's real close to compound interest. If you understand what happens when you don't pay your bank statement, it gets multiplied on top. Well, it's the same theory, because just because you, you have a 250,000, 300, let's try 700,000 dollar deficit, okay? But you got grant money, and you got stimulus money, and it hides it, and then before you know it, oh, you're back to good. No, we went too far. That's why we raised taxes last year, so we can get on top of it, okay? So, you know, you have to watch what you spend, okay? That should not be taken personally, okay? And I've spoke very frank with you, okay? And if we had issues, I'll tell you how to issue.
Well, my guys don't break equipment on purpose to get new things. I'm just saying, that's just one of the things I just...
So, you know, my job is, is when I hear something and when I see things going on, is to bring it to the attention, okay? And yes, that was a comment made from somebody in the department, okay? And I said, that's what I said, okay? So, and I don't, I don't, you know, I don't like how you're perceiving them.
Well, I appreciate your answer. Thank you.
Is there anything else that you'd like to know about the budget?
Nope.
Can you ask me, answer me this question now? Do you know what's going on with our street openings? Why our number is so low with street openings? I know there's an issue with street openings and people not paying. Do you know anything about that? Do you know any reason why we, why we're so low on this? You know, and it gets into the business license too. Like, we're low on our business license, you know? So, you know, before you come at me and you want to know numbers, you should really understand your own numbers inside your department. And I know we print those, we print those, we print the profit-loss budget. You've got one today, okay? There, there, these doors are open, you know? If there's something you need to know and you need to understand about a budget, you called me before. I don't know why you can't call me now, but that's good.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Any other public comment this evening? Yes, sir?
Eli Hammond, Beast Mountain.
You go to the line, too, you.
Yep. Real quick, a couple comments were made on the comprehensive plan. Is that already underway, and is there opportunity for public input, or we already passed that point?
Mayor, do you know that?
Did you want, I mean, I can answer. You can answer. So, well, maybe we could both answer if we have additional information. So it is still in draft form, and so there will be continued involvements. One of the final pieces is with the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission obviously has to hold public hearings with respect to that draft comprehensive plan, so there will be some additional opportunity for public input.
Eli, there was a meeting, oh, two or three weeks ago, for the public to attend.
Gotcha.
Okay, and then that's when the, the planning commission was not included.
Oh, okay.
So that kind of put it back a little bit, but there was, like, they were giving their final report to the public, and then we were going out to meet with the city council. When the planning commission wasn't involved, that's what put it back a little bit.
Okay. And where can we find information about when there's an opportunity for the public to?
At the beginning of August, I would anticipate the Planning Commission releasing some sort of, I would assume, the draft document for public review. And in that case, it would, I mean, they would publish it. You could reach out to City Hall or the Redevelopment Authority. I'm managing the grant for that and am aware of the knowings, but the Planning Commission would, could also be in contact.
And the Planning Commission, as well as councils, required to actually hold a public hearing for public comment, so most likely there will be a newspaper advertisement showing where that meeting, date, and time. In addition, I would also guess, don't pull me on this, but I would guess it would also be on the city website.
Okay. All right. My other comment as it relates to that, then, is, first of all, thank you for all the hard work that you guys have done. You know, we have a lot of folks here from supporting the parks and recreations. Great improvements on the investment in some of the beautification of those parks. Biggest concern is the maintenance and upkeep, and the reason I bring up the five-year plan is that there were several comments on grants, applications for improvement and investments, a brand-new park. Every investment comes one more to-do list on terms of additional maintenance and upkeep. So every time we make an investment, there is a tendency to focus on the grant money for the investment, missing out on the cost to maintain that for its life cycle. So I'm hoping that we address that in our five-year plan. We know we have constraints with our budget, but we continue to add additional infrastructure that requires the support of that budget, so we need to address that as well. I'm hoping we can do that with the five-year plan as well. That's all. Thank you, yes.
Thank you. Any other public comment? No, that's all I have.
Thank you. Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Union Town, the council hereby adjourn to meet Thursday, August 3, 2023, at 5:00 PM. Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Wazaki?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkie?
Yes. Thank you all for attending.